It's five o'clock and this is the time that we normally go into our work session. It's okay with council members, we don't have really anything. Anything to cover during the work session, it's okay, I'd like to just call the meeting door. Does everybody do with that? Okay, I'll call the meeting, the last official council meeting. This council and mayor, they're in attendance. And if you will, I'll ask you if you'll stand with us. We'd like to open with a word of prayer. And if we call about Fred and Lee, but I'm going to ask our attorney then when we open our meeting.
Listen, brother, our father, we thank you that you are so merciful to us, that you've given us your son, the lessons of life, the opportunities and privileges that we enjoy in this country. And we make these decisions tonight in this community, so you're deciding, look to your word, know how the things should be guided, so that you would be honored and glorified by the things that happen. Father, and to be with those that put themselves in harm's way for us, those in service, and that you would make sure that they are kept safe and watch over their families, fathers, that we go through this evening, guide us and protect us, we ask you, pray.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands on command.
Okay, at this time. At this time, we don't allow any sense of, everybody in the room, address the council with any comments or suggestions, anything you would like to address the council, if we'll allow you to do that at this time. If not, I'll ask the word of it. Oh, I'm sorry, come ahead, Dan.
Good evening, everybody. I have just a little nice news to, we had a little sidewalk sale today at WBG, and we raised three hundred dollars for our pantry. And so we put away on the budget for November, December, and now we're into twenty-six. So we just want to thank y'all for letting us be there, it's been wonderful. And that's just what I want to say, thank you.
Thank you, David. Anyone else? Yeah, I'll ask the clerk if she will, call Row.
Counselor Stan.
One last time, here.
Counselor Dean Tucker.
Here.
Counselor Nice.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Here.
Counselor Quan Milius.
Here.
Mayor Sawyer.
Here.
Okay, I'll ask that we have a motion to accept the agenda presented to you.
I'll make a motion to accept it, then Mr. Presenting.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to accept the agenda presented, although in favor, let them all say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none, and the ayes have it. Okay, at this time, we will open this portion of the meeting for a public meeting. And this is for the purpose of ordinance number twenty-five-six, the Blackwood Hepburn Stall rezoning. Anyone would like to address that ordinance for or against? Okay, if not, I will deem that public meeting closed. We'll get right into our business session, under new business, we have the bill that has been presented to you for payment.
I make a motion to pay our bills.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to pay the invoices that have been presented for payment, although in favor, let them all say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none. Second item of business is the Coleman County Commission invoice for five thousand six hundred forty-one dollars forty-seven cents. This is an invoice that has been presented to us for the Sheriff Department, law enforcement overtime coverage for the city of Hassle for the month of September. You'd ask at the last meeting that they send us a breakdown for their services, which I have given that to you in your package, you have a listing there from March through August, which we paid at the last meeting, and you also have a copy there for the month of September.
I'm gonna make a motion, we do not pay this bill, we do not have an agreement, or verbal or written, and looking at how they charge these overtime hours, I question it, especially when you see overtime hours, twelve, twelve hours and a quarter, I mean, going on most of it, I mean, that's what you're seeing on here, but a few nine, a few sixes. I think I just have it, I don't feel confident in what they presented to us, especially since we do not have an agreement. I don't think we should pay it, because the county, the sheriff is supposed to patrol our area, and we don't have a dedicated patrolman. So that's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
I'll second that. And to, we need to get with the sheriff's department, sit after all, some contract for us to sign before we can pay it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to not pay the invoice that has been presented to us.
I'd like a roll call vote today.
With this good.
Your interest got you, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. But the twelve hours is normal shift. I'm not by no means telling you anything about, no, but twelve hours is a normal shift. And the reason why they're overtime hours is mainly because that's, they don't have a patrolman deputy for this area, so they're having to move someone out of their normal hours to patrol here, towards our jurisdiction, is what I was understanding as far as, from the get-go, since we've not had a police department. But that's the reason why the twelve hours is for, this accounting system, this is from their time sheets, as far as what I understand, from Mayor Sawyer and from, I have not spoken to the sheriff himself, but this is from their actual, the deputies in our jurisdiction in the days, they, so this is work that's already been provided. So I by no means think that we, I think we should pay it, because if we want to do something different, or the new council wants to do something different, that would be up to them, but this is already services that have been provided. If we don't want anyone in our jurisdiction, patrolling in Hassle's jurisdiction, we just need to give them notice and force, be, cease and assist. Then we have to go back to the district of one hundred fifty miles, is the way I understood it when we first got into this, without police.
Well, from my understanding, what's supposed to have two patrol cars coming through our area every day?
No, sir, there's just one. There's one deputy in our jurisdiction, unless something's changed since this first initiated, one deputy in the district for the, for their shift, unless they were called to another district for assistance. In other words, if Holly Pond District, there are six districts in the county, and then if there was one, had to go assist, and that's the reason why you probably get some of these nine, ten hours and thirteen hours, that's probably, they either got, had to be in another district, I guess, if I said I've not confirmed any of that with the sheriff.
Well, I still think we should have some agreement.
No, I understand that, I by no means, but I think that would be something the new council should come upon. You know, if this is gonna make continuation.
Yes.
A verbal, you know, this, but as far as what we went through, as far as needing someone at the moment, that's kind of what we had talked about, but it was not a verbal contract as much as, hey, I'll help y'all out, and I believe we ought to honor that, and especially, you know, at the meeting that night at the civic center, that's kind of the same thing we were talking about there, so. I definitely, if we want to cease and assist after this meeting, we can contact the sheriff and let him know, and I'm sure they can use that deputy somewhere else or quit getting overtime. But this, you know, since this has already been established, I think we should, we owe it, we should pay it.
I'm withdrawing my second then. Dan, what do you think?
It is not a legal responsibility to, the sheriff's obligation is to patrol the entire county without a police department, the idea is lies, and we all should patrol this region as well. So it's kind of like getting a tax and then getting another tax, but it's required by law.
So under your opinion, should we pay it or not?
There was not a contract to do so, the only reason that you would have a contract is if they enforced your ordinances, and I understand this, you're not asked to enforce your ordinances under the regular, so you don't have an obligation to do so. So technically, you're not obliged, I think it would be a donation to the county, frankly.
But we would, we paid it last time, we set a precedent, we've already paid.
But it doesn't create, haven't, haven't donated one of those supplies here, so you're.
The only thing that we requested, you'd be in our jurisdiction, and I understand the county, but that, we're in a hundred fifty district, a hundred fifty mile district, whereas we requested a individual unit in our jurisdiction only, so I think that's, that's the reason, I agree with you a hundred percent, under constitutional, the sheriff is in charge of the law enforcement for the whole county, but us requesting that deputy being in our district, I believe we do, that's my, my vote, or my opinion.
Well, not asking for anything from the get-go, we knew from the beginning that we were gonna be charged for that service.
Yes.
So it was more of a verbal type of agreement, I guess, that we have with them, that we provide the extra service, and we would.
And do that civic center, the meeting at the civic center, I think that's what, you know, kind of what we talked about, and he said the first month, do y'all get kind of settled in what y'all need to do, I'll provide that, and then since then, I mean, since he said that first month, I'll provide that, I interpreted that as being, we're gonna be charged the next month, so that's the reason. But like I said, I think we owe this one because it's already passed, and if we don't want to owe it no longer, we'll call the sheriff tonight, give him a can, cease and assist, have a deputy in our district.
Well, really, I think that should be the new council's responsibility, if they want to continue with it.
Yes, sir.
I mean.
I agree with you.
I really feel, I've got mixed emotions about it, but we did somewhat agree for him to cover our area. And just because we did, I feel somewhat obligated to do so. But I really feel that the new council and mayor should make the next call.
Oh, I agree, sir. And like I said, services are rendered, so I believe we owe the bill, and as far as what goes on further than that, that's completely on the new council mayor, I believe that's their, their obligation to the city to make that decision.
Okay, do you stick with your previous motion?
I do.
We'll leave in a second. For the lack of a second, that motion dies, so do we have a new motion?
I think the motion we paid for Coleman County Commission invoice.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to pay the invoice that has been presented. I would also like to have a roll call vote for that.
Counselor Stan.
No.
Counselor Dean Tucker.
Yes.
Counselor Nice.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Quan Milius.
Yes.
Mayor Sawyer.
Yes.
Okay, so that, item number two, that invoice should be paid. Item number three, Mobile Communications of America invoice, this is twenty-two thousand eight hundred thirty dollars. It's for a contract, it was a three-year contract that we entered into with Mobile Communications back last year. This goes for communication, update, upkeep of the equipment within the police department. We paid that the first year, and now the invoice is due again for the second year of that three-year contract. We have contacted them, I have contacted them several times, to see if we cannot have that contract voided. But I've been told by them that, that the biggest part of that service is contracted out to Motorola. And then Motorola is the one that is saying they will not cancel the contract. But I got, I talked with one of the, another person there with Mobile Communications today, and he told me that he is trying to contact, Motorola has a new agent for this area, and he is getting in touch with him, gonna have him contact me, because I told them that I wanted somebody from Motorola to tell me that they would not cancel that contract. So I'm waiting on this Motorola agent to even call, so I would like for us to table that until we make sure that there is no way that that contract can be voided out, because we're not using the service, you know.
They're not doing any maintenance.
They're not doing any maintenance at all.
Have they done, have they even showed us?
No.
To offer any maintenance?
No.
So, yeah, do you need to motion on that?
So I want to motion that, yeah.
I make a motion to table this for more information established.
Okay, have a motion in a second to table, item number three, Mobile Communication America invoice. Although in favor, let them all say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none.
Mayor Sawyer.
Motion carries, yes, ma'am.
May I ask you a motion in a second?
Motion second.
Okay, that concludes our new business, under old business, we have the ordinance number twenty-twenty-five-six, the Blackwood Hepburn Stall rezoning. We have that, had that presented for the first reading, this will be the second reading. So I actually need a motion to adopt that ordinance.
I'm making a motion that we adopt ordinance number two-oh-two-five-six. I second. Please.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to adopt ordinance number twenty-twenty-five-six, is there any more discussion on that? Okay, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Counselor Stan.
Yes.
Counselor Dean Tucker.
Yes.
Counselor Nice.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Quan Milius.
Yes.
Mayor Sawyer.
Yes. So ordinance number twenty-twenty-five-six, it's been approved and passed, and it will become an ordinance. Item number two, the Industrial Ward Development Board appointments, I've talked and, talked to Nolan Bradford, Nolan is the one that asked for this, and I have talked to him, and we've really decided that needs to be adopted by the new mayor and council. So I would ask you to table item number two.
Any motion?
I need a motion.
I make a motion that we table item number two. Second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to table item number two for the Industrial Ward of Development, Board of Adjustment Board appointments, any discussion? All those in favor of that, let them all say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none, the ayes have it. Item number three, the Planning Commission appointments, I've also talked to Mr. Bradford about this one, we feel like too, that that also needs to be a piece of business, needs to be taken care of with the new council, so I would ask you to table that also.
I make a motion that we table the Planning Commission appointments.
Have a motion in a second to table item number three, any discussion? All those in favor of that, let them all say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none. Motion carries. Okay, that concludes our new and old business for this meeting. We have a report from staff, Rusty, you have anything from Public Works?
Oh, I guess, sir, my job, by which we detail is attached, that I just wanted to let the council know that we are finished with Highway Thirty-one, Heart Project Bayport, and it's completed, and we just wait for some grass to grow, so. That looks great, it took several years, but we've got it completed.
May I have a report from Fire Department, well, we'd like to recognize Roger Green, Roger Green is in the meeting tonight. Roger has decided that he has lived a short-lived retirement, and I've talked to Roger about coming back and working with Fire Department, so Roger as of yesterday is the, has been the point police chief.
Fire chief.
Fire chief, I'm sorry, fire chief. Fire chief. Thank you for bringing that. Bart Axler will remain, you know, the assistant chief, and we're looking forward to that department continuing in the same professionalism that they have in the past. We, I met with the firemen Tuesday, Monday, I think it was, and I said to them, you know, we have always only gotten positive, good reports from our fire department, from the EMTs, from the work that they do, and we know that they're gonna continue on, so welcome back, Roger. As fire chief.
You're just so excited, you're not even paying your last camera.
I guess you're probably right, yeah. Okay, you have your council member packet in it, you've got your bank account balance sheet. Do you have any questions there, you have to answer them, you also have Public Works, their bi-weekly job detail report. And at this time, we normally open up for any council discussion items, and I felt like that maybe this being your last, last meeting, if council members, you may have a word that you would like to say in departing. So John, I'll start with you, if you have anything you'd like to say.
It's been a good ride for nearly seven years, and I enjoyed most of the time being here. So thank y'all for voting me in, and look forward to helping the new council and new mayor the way I can.
Go Big John. Mary?
I'll have to say, it's been a pleasure, I've enjoyed it. It's been an experience, to say the least. Some disappointments with our police department, what's happened there, but, you know, as a whole, I think this council has done a good deal, we've seen a lot of businesses come in to the city in the past five years, and I'm thankful for those, and thankful for all of you guys for coming in and supporting us the way you have, and we'll move on to a new journey in our life, thank you.
Well, I've got a few notes here, so y'all bear with me, I'm gonna read some of them, 'cause I'm not good at public speaking. But I'd like to thank the people of Hassle for letting me be a representative of Hassle. We've done the best we could, I don't know how we could have done better. This is my third term up here, and I'm hanging, I'm hanging it up, my civic duties. Eight years old, it's time for me to pay attention to my family, I think. I'd like to thank the council, couldn't ask for any better people to work with. We've had our ups and downs, but when this is over with, we always shake hands. We're a happy bunch, we do, we get along real well. If you didn't have the council, I mean, one person could handle it, usually out of one opinion. But if we, we work together, and I'd like to thank them for that. I'd like to also thank the mayor, Mayor Sawyer. He was pro temp, and he stepped into a difficult situation, it was a job he didn't want, but he took it, and I think he done quite well. At times, I think he felt like throwing his hands up in the air and walking out the door. But I'm glad he stuck it out, and he done a good job under the circumstances. I'd like to thank Kenneth Grenius for stepping in and taking Jim's place in difficult times. I appreciate it, Kenneth. I personally have lived here in Hassle all my life. I was a boy scout leader for twelve years. Fire department, certified firefighter for thirty years, EMT, medical tech for twenty-eight of those years. Been on city council, like I said earlier, for twelve years. I love Hassle. I love the people of Hassle. But like Senator Kennedy, who does he have to say it? I love the citizens of Hassle, but sometimes it just felt like slapping the smart into somebody. I'd like to wish the new council that's coming in the best of it. I know it was, you're gonna have your problems, just having them the best you can. When you, excuse me, I swear. When you get tired, you don't know which way to go. Take off the bow. Read, exhale, forty-one, ten. Take your hand in the air, and the Lord will reach to rest the boy, and he will handle it. That's all I've got to say, God bless.
Ms. Kim, the only retarded member of this, of this credit.
It's been a pleasure, serving you all, serving you for seventeen years, you mean, it's been a great pleasure. I will wish you a lot. I just want to thank everyone for all the support they've given us over the years. I look forward to the next four years and to see what the new council can do, and I'm very proud to be a part of that. And I want to thank Tanya for all the help she's given me over the last seventeen years, and God, that's when I've asked, kind of showed me what I needed to know. I just want to thank everyone, and I hope you're still as interested the next four years as you have been. Come back and be a part and be involved.
Well, I appreciate Governor King for the last year and a half that y'all have given me as far as appointed position. I'd like to say that I've made every decision after prayer, and all the best information I could do, and made that decision after those two things on my boat. I appreciate the employees here, that's for the city of Hassle, they're some of the best people you ever meet, doing some of the best jobs that goes unrecognized, because they, they do the real work here. The ones that here every day, in, day out, at city hall, the Public Works, Fire Department. The ones that hear every day in, day out at city hall, the Public Works, Fire Department, we had the police department, they were employees of some of the best people you ever meet and do, do a hard job sometimes dealing with some difficult situations and sometime in a lot of good situations. As far as the citizens of Hattieville, some of the best people you ever meet. Lived here my whole life, I'll reiterate what Jimmy said. I appreciate Jimmy's remarks, but it, it, it was a difficult year and six months. But I'll say, like I said before, I believe that every decision I made, I did it not hastily, it was through prayer and getting all the information I could and making an educated decision on that situation. And I believe that's for everyone up here. I'd like to say that, you know, like John and everybody else had said, that we might not agree on every situation, but we, it was never personal. It was the best decision that we thought would make the city of Hattieville better and that's what we always strive to do. So I appreciate the opportunity and I wish the council and the new mayor all the love. Anything I can do, I'm just a phone call away and I will be, anytime they need me, I will be here for them. And we'd be glad to serve in any capacity that has been anybody. So thank y'all.
Thank you. Well, I would like to say that, you know, I came on, I came on the city council with Mayor Dale. I'm not even sure what year that was, seemed like two thousand and eight, I believe it was. We both came on as council members and then he was elected mayor and I was elected back to city council and so we've served all these years. And I really don't know what I'm going to do on the second and fourth Thursday night of each month because I've been coming here for the last twenty years, you know, so. But it has been really good. We have had a rough, a rough year and a half with some of the problems that we've had. But as I look back and I see the things that have been accomplished over the last twenty years, there has been a lot more good than, than bad. We, I feel like we've accomplished a lot of good things for the city of Hattieville. I think Hattieville is a better place to live, better place to raise your family, better place to attend church and school. And I want this city council to know how much I appreciate each one of you because we've all, we've all stuck together, we've all faced the, the problems, good or bad, together and we've all pretty much been in agreement on things and I appreciate that. I also want to take the time to thank our city employees. Sometimes our city employees get, get beat up and they, they get, they get a raw deal, I'm going to tell you. But there's not a city employee that I cannot go to, have not been able to go to and say a citizen has asked for this or a citizen has, has this complaint or a citizen sees that this needs to be done and they get it done. And so I thank them for that. I don't know of any better group of people to work with than what the city of Hattieville has right now. And as the others have said, I also wish the incoming mayor and council, I wish them the very best. I have all the confidence in the world going forward that they're going to, they're going to do some good things for Hattieville. They're going to work through some of the issues that might be left behind, but they'll work through them and, and they'll, they'll do well. So you have our, our prayers in going forward. So in saying that, any employee or anyone would like to say?
I'd like to say thank y'all for your service.
Okay, approval of minutes, we have the minutes from October ninth meeting.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes of October the ninth.
Save it.
Have a motion in a second to approve those minutes from October the ninth, break of council meeting, all those in favor, let them say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, there is none. Motion carries. As far as announcements, we have the downtown trunk or treat, which will be Sunday, the October the twenty-sixth from four to six P.M. Also, we have the city council organizational meeting. That'll be on Monday, November the third at six P.M. at the Hattieville Civic Center and I'm sure if we ask, they would appreciate anyone who'd like to attend that, to come and be a part of that organizational meeting.
If you've got a favorite Bible, bring it to me.
Okay, and also then we want to remember the Mud Creek Festival will be Saturday, November the eighth from four to six P.M. And that concludes our announcements and I want to recognize.
We need to announce the Bud Creek Marching Festival is going to have tomorrow, on the Saturday.
Okay, Marching Creek Fest will be this Saturday.
Vans will be this Saturday.
Man, the Vans Fest will be this Saturday.
This town will be full of people.
Okay, all right.
There's some people going on, some people going on at Veterans Park, the thirty-first, they're going to have live vans, activities for the kids and it doesn't house any time. So yeah, I think it's from eight, six to eleven maybe, but anyway, just to let you know.
That's on the thirty-first. Any other announcements before we enter the adjournment?
Oh, and don't forget Tinsel Trail. We are having our tree lighting, the, what is their date, the twenty-fifth?
Twenty-first?
Twenty-first of November. Love for you to come down if you have, would like to participate, just contact one of the city town people or myself. We are, we're working hard to make it better than last year.
And I know Kelly Duke back there was probably going to, hoping I would not recognize him back there, but Kelly is our county commissioner that represents this area and we want to thank, thank you Kelly for attending our meeting.
We thank y'all for everything y'all have done for Hattieville. Y'all have got it, Hattieville's been a tough one, y'all done it with integrity, but God first. That mission, we appreciate y'all. Look forward to working with the new council with exception of you.
Kelly, Kelly's been, been very good to work with and we appreciate him, you know, helping us in some of the areas, helped us to get the county road, just that we just got repaid up here on Oakville Road. Thank you for that.
Anything I can do for y'all, anything I can do for the new council, we're here for you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank y'all.
And we've got a little reception to follow, so we welcome, welcome y'all to stay and just have a, have a few refreshments here and just sort of fellowship together. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Save it.
Have a motion in a second to adjourn this final meeting, all those in favor, let them all say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, there is none. The motion carries.